Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the smart resources committee meeting. Have we got any members for public session? Yeah, thank you. So I just want to election of chair. Fran, can I nominate yourself, councillor Donnelly, please?
Certainly.
It's taken away, Andy, thank you very much. Is there any other nominations? Those in favour of me?
You got my job.
It's not a problem. Apologies for absence. We have apologies from councillor Howard Maudy and councillor Jane. Thank you very much for having to accept us.
Yes.
Thank you. Election of vice chair. Fran?
I'd like to nominate councillor Howard Maudy, I believe that he's happy to take on the position again.
Yeah, I might be seconded up, unless somebody else wants to. Okay, is there any other nominations? Those in favour of powers. Let's see, number one, thank you very much, everybody. Okay, so I support declarations of interest. Thank you. Item five, minutes of the last meeting, they were, that was held on the 8th of April. We're happy to agree those, agree, thank you. Minutes of the communication strategy group. So we've received those, we've got a recommendation that a report be prepared on the creation of a preset line and allocation of resources pursuing the most appropriate quality award to commence in April 2026. Fran, I propose we accept the recommendation.
So.
Okay, so seconded by Andy, a discussion on it, okay?
Yeah, just, I noticed that we were on eight, well, they were, the committee were on eight to update the entries detail. Would it be worth considering as other members, I don't know, member of this council, or whether we, they go away and look at whether it's at any value or not any value about Buckinghamshire council members? I don't think we should make a decision about it now, if it makes you go away.
It's a struggle here.
Yeah, me too.
I just want your turn.
I'm item eight.
Item eight.
Well, we've gone past that, we've accepted the minutes.
Well, you're going to sit. So minutes of communication strategy group, one recommendation.
Recommendation from those minutes.
Yeah, well, we've got time, so that's item eight.
So you'll wait for two. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right, so we've got, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this? Just want to say again? Okay, so those in favour of this, going on to, what, you guys for council? Shall we read?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, item seven, so we've got budgets. Item 2.1, income and expenditure report and summary of budget variances. So for next A, what I will do for those that are new, I go by the number in the top left hand corner. So three of 21. And it's point A. Four of 21. Five. Six. Seven. Eight, John?
Sorry, I'm flicking through. It says, by and required per minute to be completed. Do we need to make a decision on item 4225, rates will lay sale, six of 21, apologies for the summary.
None of this committee has already voted on that and agreed it. It's just that Jane hasn't processed it yet.
I'm sorry, I'll show up.
Did I get on to eight?
She won.
Nine. Ten. Robin?
On ten, but.
And nine.
No, it's fine. And so I'll ask the officers, that's, it might be it, as in right, maybe it's been on the gym.
Okay. Can I just ask the councillors such that he speaks up? Because we're only here, we're speaking to him, and I'm not here to.
No, no, I forgot how.
It probably wouldn't have, I would put, yeah.
Thank you. That would be great, Jane, we all still like it, isn't it?
It's in the wrong group, so I think it's the problem.
Yeah.
What we talk in all these.
It's the default centre, right, English?
Okay, long as we can get that sorted out, John, before we meet, and then come through.
I'll bring the bridge next time.
Thank you, thank you, John, it just, anyhow, I'd like to do the same.
Okay, can next B, to page 11. Well.
So I'm on 11.
Yeah.
Um, seems to be quite a lot of expenditure on path testing. I wonder whether that's something that we could look at possibly getting somebody trained up in house to do at some point.
Oh, I don't know how specialist that would need for somebody to be. We'll look into it.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah. And let's see.
Yeah, we'd cut the cost down, probably.
I mean, I would say, the reason it looks like loads is because they invoice us for each individual building separately.
Yeah. Robin?
Um, well, is that a proposal that we have something come back to discuss it, because?
That's going to look against that and bring it back, yeah?
Yeah, that's going to come back, we'll come back, that's fine, and it's a, it's a reasonable suggestion. And it's not achievable, but if you've got somebody else who can do it, that's helpful.
Yeah, we'd have to take into account the cost of training somehow.
Yeah.
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 And if that's to be done yearly, you never know, do you? Then, I mean, might need to be re-certified for it, so. Um, okay, page 12, I think we're on. Page 13. 14. Just going down. Okay, now we're on to our bond transfers, item eight, so just to note the following transfers, I may beat them out. If you've got any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. No? Yeah. Thank you. Item nine, procurement policy intended for satisfactory report that we lost first, brain. Um, and just hopefully we'll raise it all. Uh, so.
Um. So I have done, I've done a thorough review of what we're doing at the moment and how we can make sure that we are properly compliant with the procurement acts. Um, I have detailed in the policy, hope it's made nice and clearly, so that it's, um, it's easy to just glance at and work out whereabouts we are. And basically, I like the question.
Item.
I was just wondering why in the introduction, it's brings into view the climate emergency action plan? When it's really saying supports the whole council's strategic goals? I couldn't quite see why that was brought out in wording.
Because the climate emergency action plan, there are ambitions in that to, that this is locally is possible. So we have, this report is looking at how we can balance what the council wants to do with its climate emergency action plan, whereas making sure that we are compliant with government regulations to ensure best values. And that's why I specifically mentioned it in the introduction.
But surely isn't our aim always where possible to try and purchase locally? I don't quite see the difference, I don't see where, you know, it needs highlighting. It's not a problem, but I just don't see, you know, why it's there when others may be on.
I suppose, no, there are some reasons. This council is obviously very supportive of local fair trade and purchasing locally as possible. But there are potential conflicts with that under the procurement act where we have, there is a requirement to your best value, which isn't necessarily the cheapest, but across best value. So it's not appropriate or legal to say we're always going to go with the benevolent supplier. I think we only have to use the local supplier, because that's not necessarily going to guarantee best value. So that's the reason why I mentioned it, and mentioned that one specifically, because we do have big ambitions within our emergency action plan. Look like an emergency action plan, do much as locally as possible.
Okay.
Does that remind myself, you're still looking at me as though you're?
I think it highlights more of the problem that there may be a slight difference than than not, but if you're happy with it there, you know, hey ho.
Um, but you feel it's not appropriate, aren't you, John?
Well, no, it's not up to me, but I'm just, it just, it just stuck out of the page, that was all.
Okay, so I've got John and Heather and Anya and then Ruth, all in the line. Who's got John?
Um, one of the issues that we discussed in the previous meeting, and now we're coming, which one was? Whether this, I think it was on, whether discussing the contract for the moving bridge in Bolton Park. And there was the scoring on the columns. Um, but some of the kind of criteria were mashed together into one number, and some of the criteria were separate. Uh, and there was only a very small difference between the wing and the segment, because they were tendered. And we agreed then that next time something like that happens, we ought to see all the data separately. Is that embedded somewhere in this town car, or is that actually a separate kind of memo about how we do things? I understand this is about the overall broad policy, but do you need to look into the details or will that be answered for us?
I think what, two seconds, this is the policy as to how we're going to do this. I can put a statement in there regarding what might go in the report, but I would suggest what is proportionately report is possibly changeable, rather than something that would be fixed in stone. If, I mean, I certainly took on board what members said, that they felt they didn't have enough information in the last report. Um, so, yeah, I'm going to learn from that, but that's possibly not something that I would embed directly into a policy.
Okay, all right, I think, let's see how it works out, I think, is what I would say. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying is that we don't want to tie ourselves up in too many, too much detail in a policy like this. Okay, open your phone.
May I give some information to John on that particular question?
Okay.
Because in this policy, it does say, in one of the paragraphs, the highest scoring tender will ordinarily be awarded the contract. If concerns are raised, uh, which is what you're saying, about the residual quality, the process must be repeated. So all companies have a fair chance to bid against any revised criteria. I suppose that's against the criteria, not the score, I suppose, having now read that a couple of times.
Very good.
Yeah.
So Heather, sounds, I'm, I think that that's to do with the reporting to council rather than the tendering process itself, isn't it?
Yeah. My Heather?
Um, honey, I just wanted to welcome the references to sustainability and low carbon supply chains and all the other good stuff in there, as well as price. Because I think that's a big step forward as soon as you start introducing these things. Um, I, I guess I'm I'm wondering how this works in practice. So if, if you have to buy an illegal free for the office building, to what extent do you get a more energy efficient one when it's more expensive?
That's an interesting question, and that's actually quite alone. At that level of value, that would be for a SARS member to make some decisions as to what was most appropriate. I think, um, I would hope a bit of common sense, if it's with a reasonable difference, that a reasonable member of the public would think that was an appropriate additional amount. Where it gets more complicated later on is when you have big, bigger projects, um, and the bridge, which was one that was discussed quite then. It's diff, what, how much you might, what percentage you might want to allocate towards environmental aspects or, um, how am I phrasing this? I don't remember what I was doing before, sorry, two seconds. Well, the percentage that you might break down tender will be different depending on what the tender is. I will not explain myself, but with the bridge, a high percentage was allocated towards um, a company with the confidence to undertake that work. It's, it's a specialist piece of work, so we probably put a higher percent, well, we did put a higher percentage on their previous experience, their ability to evidence that they had done similar work and that they were competent and professional to undertake the work. Which did mean that there was a low percentage towards how close they were to Buckingham, because the priority there were more the cost of the overall work and how good and how able that company was. Whereas with another, um, another tender, something maybe that was more green spaces orientated, where there would be multiple local companies that would be capable of doing that work and it's not their specialist, then you would probably have a different, um, higher percentage towards the more environmental aspect, because you can, you can competently as part of best value, give that more priority. Does that?
Yeah, we have no concerns, thank you.
Thank you. Anya?
So with the climate emergency action plan, that being in there, I'm in favour of it, because it gives us a, an opportunity in committee when we make a decision to say, well, in that case, we want to be going local, or we want to raise another, or, you know, raise the importance of an environmental issue. We don't tend to do that if the price difference is massive. But if the price difference is modest, we have done it before. So for example, we've gone for a different, a local supplier of the, um, of the plants for the, you know, for the planters and the hanging baskets. Because the price, you know, that was, we felt as a committee that was justifiable, because there wasn't a huge price difference. But in another occasion, when the price difference was very significant, we felt we couldn't override the need to, um, deliver best value for money. Whereas obviously the competence comes under best value for money, so that doesn't need to be stated separately. That's how I understand it.
I would be very clear in this, this is, I'm, I'm not necessarily going to particularly like this, but the percentage that is allocated towards sustainability and environmental factors needs to be decided at tender stage. What you can't do is put a tender out, ask companies to pull in the bid, um, against a process, score it off fairly and appropriately, and then in the meeting change the goalposts, because that is unfair. Um, and that would be considered to be a legal process.
And I think that's why this report was brought here, wasn't it? Because it was a little bit blurry, that meeting, that it might, it shouldn't have happened, and the way it did. So that's why this report was brought here.
So it's, it's still, just be a little bit clearer from our point of view, sort of stuff that needs to be built into the tender. But you can't say to everybody, this is the scoring process, this is what we're asking for. Go away and come back and evidence your ability to do this, and then decide that you don't like the answer, and then change it and anything, because that's unfair.
Yeah.
Okay, Ruth?
Yeah, I'm also in favour that you've put into climate emergency and social considerations. I think it is really important, thank you.
Yeah. Robin?
Yeah, I think much of it, no problem with any of the points raised, I don't think any decision we've taken has been wrong, because if members take a decision, it can't be wrong, can it? Um, so I think that we have to consider that nowhere in this policy that can be corrected on three is their ability to bring elected members' knowledge into this, because we're spending money on local issues, and we're completely as councillors blind tendering. We may find out when we, if we agree something, there was some information which local councillors do have. That's why they can't do election, because they bring their information to the table. That they may have said, well, I would have told you this if I'd had an opportunity to do that. It may be something really good, maybe something really bad, or it may be something supportive for the wife, that is a good contract. Basically, an absolute position, I'm trying to, we will have to accept it, we agree this, that we have no say on very little of it. And maybe what we accept is good practice. But, um, but we have to be recognised that in doing that, we get to the point where we will find out who we give the contract to after we've done it. And then maybe you think, well, if I'd known that, I wouldn't have said that, or I'm really pleased because of that. Although we have to protect ourselves from confidential issues and the fact that.
Not look as well as you can watch in.
Well, like, it's not how it looks, really, because it looks how it looks, but, um, um, we have to settle some apparent interest in that. I do think it's worth considering, um, the aspects of why would you stand up for council? Spend public money and not know always what you're spending it on. And I think there needs to be a balance throughout between this, which I understand why it's done, is that, well, often the sums of money aren't huge. So I don't know quite how we reconcile those concerns, um, because it will come up, it has come up, will come up again. And when we have tenders in other committees, um, why don't we know who they are and who these companies are? We need a little bit of discussion around why that would be the case. And, and if we make the decision, we really don't know why we're making that decision for great, because there's nothing leads me to this to suggest that in every case, that's necessary. Um, I have seen it often when we were considering starting large contracts for openness. And the start of contract would never go forward, but we would have created to about a million pounds. We knew who the, we were, we knew who the contract was, we knew who the, um, who the contract would be, we knew all that information at the meeting, when we were going to decide it, which we didn't decide to, anyway. Very good reason. So I don't wonder why we want to remove ourselves so far from the process? Because that's what we've been doing for three years, unless we can come up with the grounds to bring that. Um, and that's all I'm saying, I endeavor that about the principle of it, because, um, we need a line here somewhere, why that wouldn't we say? We had to be able to say that in a meeting, it was decided because X. Because that question would particularly, it has occurred, will occur and continue to occur when we get a contract to a committee. And that's really, um, why I think we need to discuss the principle of that maybe, or accept the principle of what the report is, but we have to do it normally.
Fran first, then Ruth. And then Roger, Roger.
Okay, so first of all, the flower contract was quotes, it wasn't tenders, was it?
I think we were, we were under the 30,000.
Yeah, absolutely, under 30,000. There is, there's a difference there between, um, quotation and. The way, the way that it's, it has to be handled, really. So I think, I think it's comparing and compares, really, to be saying that, um, um, and I know that was my suggestion, that, that we went with the company that was closest and it was rated down. Um, and I understand now why, because I've looked into it in more detail, now I, I accept that decision. I think, um, that in order to be fair to all the suppliers who have spent, I've like, I owned those bridge contracts, um, tenders, there was some very, very detailed stuff in those, in those envelopes that I owned. Um, didn't look at them, um, in any detail, but there was, I'm like, there was, there was a huge amount of work gone into them. Um, and I believe that for some of our, our, um, tendering process, we use an outside, um, supplier to actually go through and, um, glean the necessary information out of, out of those tenders. So, um, I think with the cemetery, that was one of them, because we don't have the
Skills.
Complete necessary skill set.
Yeah.
Um, in order to do the comparisons necessary.
Yeah.
Um, for that, um. I think that it's probably better that we don't know. Because, yes, we declare interest and whatever else, but we could end up with a situation where we all know that Joe Bloggs, the builder, has put in a contract, a tender for, for a particular piece of work. He's somebody we see down the pub all the time, and that will mean that, that possibly five or six of us of whichever committee are not able to actually, um, take part in any discussion or vote on that. So therefore, that, that, that anonymity, um, is, is, um, a proper, um, way to conduct it. It gives us as councillors, um, the, um, um, the ability to make those decisions purely based on the facts. I think one of the issues we had with the bridge contracting was that we didn't feel that we had enough of the necessary information from the, um, the scoring process. And I think that was what we were asking for, was whether we could actually have that broken down, as John was saying, into the, like, not, not all lumped together, so we could see that, um, um, A or, or contract 14 or whatever, um, scored three out of five for, in this bit, and, and 19 out of 20 on this bit, et cetera. Um, so I think that's what we were asking for, really. Yeah.
Okay, Ruth?
Yeah, I think that it's a fundamental thing in local government that they, it does remain confidential. When I was last on this council, it was confidential. And I think it's important that it is, because otherwise we can bring lies into it.
Yeah.
So it's a fair process if the officers deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, two points, one to pick up, a big conversation, which has been having, it's about justice being done, and being seen to be done. And I think by making it totally anonymous, it's easier. Because everyone's, oh, it's all brown envelopes, yada, 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 so, 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 I think anonymity protects us against the accusation, don't they? Like that. Um, the other matter I want to raise, though, is that back in the autumn, we agreed a series of statements about Holocaust and memorial and so forth, and one of the things we agreed, you're saying the nine of the 10 that we had, was taking what actually we can to stop or prevent genocide of massacres in the world, including the use of our purchasing power. I'm wondering whether we need, I mean, if that's included within the strategic goals statement at the beginning of paragraph five, but I want to note that it is part of that, or else we add it specifically as well, that paragraph, that we are lying along this too. That we are, I mean, it's unlikely to be big, is it? But, you know, if there's a so, to make, you know, to make the point that we're a town council, where we can, we'll make sure we're not spending money that could in anywhere be supporting any genocide anywhere in the world. So either we just say it's part of the strategic goals, which is unhappy, or we specifically mention it, as we have done with the climate emergency action. So that would be my proposal. I think my proposal would be to, to, to mention it, actually, because we have specifically agreed that statement underlying, um, in, in the full council meeting back in August.
Thank you, John. Robin and Andy?
First, yeah, thank members for the discussion, the reason I raised it was so, that, that disclaimer, because it's a continuing. That's the other thing, members for the discussion, the reason I raised it was so we got that disclaimer, because there, it's a continuing. The question I don't ask about, and the point that was made was a good point, um. About the outside organisations doing that tended. Because the points made, some of which we haven't got the specialists involved, and that's a very good point, and. Now, we had all that discussion before, but it's a very good point, and I think we. Um, and maybe we need an explanation. But we could do that in our policy, just to state, because some come along, I'll just read his policy. I made a decision, I say, well, it's not in our policy. Now, I think that maybe we should just add a line where the clerk clearly feels pro per to say that in service dancies that would happen. But the policy and the process we follow would be the same, because it isn't in there, and we know this, we took that decision. On the point that John raised, um I do remember the conversation. And and this is, I think, the councillors looking down the land to dealing with ethical issues around um. Many things from oil, gas, nutrition and stuff, and. One of the questions which you continually posed, and he's unable to lighten pensions stuff. Um, is how do you equate with pension who, I'm not speaking for them, just heard the questions and whatever, so please don't think it's my opinion. Is how do you rationalise down what you're doing and do the effort space to know that that pension fund you put the money into, or just use as an example. Fends it on, because it's quite often in a really big, large pension fund, which a lot of different local authorities sign up into. Would it be a reasonable way forward to, a way that. Didn't answer the question, but the case, the case issue is just use a line about ethical purchasing. Because ethical purchasing would encompass lots of things, and I don't believe our. God, would it go and purchase something from somebody which was. Um, whatever, but by ethical purchasing, I think you can, it covers both the environmental issues. And both the um global issues.
It could be judged.
But but if we go into the um, we go into the other issues, well, then we have a problem that maybe um. We couldn't agree any of this tonight, because I'd like to talk about those issues that are on the agenda. So um, um before we agree the policy, and we may be here a very, very long time. Um, and that'd be my opinion about what's wrong with the world and somebody else's opinion, what's right with the world. So I think if we use the word ethical. Purchasing.
Is where we've got um under procurement policy statement, when awarding contracts, the council will. The second one, consider quality, sustainability, innovation and social value. Whether some ground it could be added into that bit there. It's not reminding us here. What's another thing?
I just think the word ethical is.
So that's ethical to it.
Well, ethics would be the word to use there, because that would be the same.
Yeah, but but I I just think that we can't, there's lots of, I think we'll go down rabbit holes with this, and and we're going to discuss each strategic thing we think by wrong with the world.
One thing that John, John. Thank you. Um, can I go to Andy, and then I want to go to Claire, and then go to Anya?
I I'm just not comfortable with using the word genocide or, you know, any statement anywhere. It is one very subjective. One person's view on genocide may not be the other person's. So I would stay away from that. And putting that word anywhere in our documentation.
Okay, thank you. Right. And thoughts?
What you've put as well. Um. I don't have any concerns about adding the word ethical in. I don't know what I'm about to say, not different numbers.
Yeah, I think it is fine.
Yeah, that is where, what I would suggest as well, I was going to say, in a way you could say that things like sustainability and social value. In fact, social value. Arguably encompasses ethics, but if if members feel more comfortable by having that. Put in explicitly and the town clerk sees no reason not to, then I would support that and I would. These are always going to be difficult issues to balance. We uh had the same thing about the investment. That we talked about some time ago. We don't, we very, very often don't have the information. And there is usually a balance to be struck, and sometimes we may simply not have the freedom of action.
Hmm.
Or the discretion that allows us to make these judgements. So I think why we will obviously try to avoid. Um, supporting all sorts of horrible things and ones that John mentions, of course, fall under this. In our purchasing policy, I don't believe that we could. Write in a lot of detailed policy prescriptions of what we would be looking out for, because it'd be a. Ex- an extremely long, yet totally incomplete document.
Yeah.
That was a long way of saying, yes, ethics should be.
All of that. John?
Can I, can I suggest then that the second line of the, when awarding contracts the council will um. Is changed to consider quality, sustainability, innovation. And social val- value and ethics where appropriate. If John's in agreement with that.
That's actually what I suggested, is that, yeah.
Sorry, me. I'll say.
I I think it was sent for two hours, no? Um, I just think ethics after innovation, so it's quality, sustainability, ethics and social values. And then that's that.
Yeah, yeah, but not to say they're really important.
So.
Well, even though I suggested it, it might be, if you want to propose, we have that. Yes.
I think to be fair, I have suggested it, but um and then.
You did.
You did.
It was just where, where it's going to be put, so, but when you want to pose that.
I just propose include the word ethic. I think we, we, then we can discuss the way the words.
We've already done that, yeah.
And the reason I'm saying, because all the other things are far too difficult for.
Yeah, that is fine. Martin? Whenever goes to vote.
Yeah, this is a big change from what we have on our website, uh agreed back in July twenty twenty one. Um, um. I'm not quite sure it captures everything that we used to have. Um, because it talks about recycled and plastic free and repairable in the old one. Um, I know this is a procurement one, but you can still procure recycled, and, you know, we haven't sort of. Brought that out in in that.
Doesn't sustainability, well, and social value.
Do you think it all comes under that these days?
Yes.
So, um, and the other.
Life cost.
The other highlighted points on the website were sourcing materials, manufacturing, packaging, transport. And disposal impact, i.e. end of life.
Yeah.
Um, that all comes under that, that long word sustainability, anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
It assures you, um, the the climate emergency social consideration says, considerations to be given to local third trade, recycled, plastic free, repairable, sustainable. Supplies to support low carbon supply chains and community benefits.
There we go, you got it all.
Okay.
And and just lastly, I'm assuming these are just the words, and then you will top and tail it. To have all the headings and the revision and everything else. So this is not actually the document.
No.
That that will come back for a full agreement, will it, with all of its. This is all the bells and whistles on the top and bottom. Thank you very much.
I want to hear it. I'll stop in that. Right, those in favour of having the word ethical included in a procurement policy statement. Um, believe it up to the office, but it's been a suggestion as to where it goes.
Oh, I think it was suggested.
So those in favour, you show, that is, you know, I'm a snake very much.
Ethics, not ethics.
Ethics, yeah.
Ethics, okay.
This is not anonymous.
Yeah.
I'll tell you where I'm distracted.
Okay, right.
We're now putting vote on the, on the substantive.
Yes, and we can vote on the um policy going to usual council. Those in favour? Again, we might as well thank you very much for that.
Goes off to the chapter. And I ask for you, the reason I don't judge. The reason I suggested the conversation around members' um participation is so that it was discussed, and we put a note in the minutes. To that, which we can refer back to when those discussions return to date, which they're bound to in in. In six or eight months' time, and I think we can't leave that minute with that working. But we discussed the immediate conclusion as to, I think, that for part of the conversation, we just agree, we refer back to the same conversation again. Which will just play groundhog day.
Well, just possibly been a great.
Yeah, I know, but I think a lot of the things in companies that we discussed, there is.
We saw.
Our agreed policy.
Yeah.
We won't have to make round the whole.
Okay, item ten, committee coming to twenty twenty six.
Afternoon.
So we have each member to four counts already.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, there's an agreement, you show. Good enough, thank you.
On my way in twenty twenty six.
Indeed. Um, eleven updates for reps on outside bodies relevant to this committee. Anybody wants to speak or for ever hundred please? Okay.
I think just to introduce the health and safety issues is then. You will be aware of some of this coming up, and. There is a lot of communications out there, because in the fire authority, I mean, about being safe with your barbecues and your fires and whatever. It'd be really nice if um we carried that communication on, because it was only twelve, eighteen months ago. There were large fires in Buckinghamshire and and lots of spread over large. The other point being that um we need to um monitor um. The changes of what goes on in in the finances of Buckinghamshire council going forward. And just look at um how they um, those changes have been impacted to us. Um, because the community boards have radically changed. Um, it's no, it's been noted that it's changed. The finances those community boards have to support them is. Next negligible, and the area that they cover is huge. So I think it would be useful establishing where we are with that. The other thing is. The, um, I think, um, as a Buckinghamshire member, I am. Concerned that the um Buckinghamshire Charter, that is its obligations, how it relates to the. Parishes, actually meets its um obligations. And it only becomes too readily, how this is challenged, because. Stakes in the constitution that town parish councils have the right to open applications committee. And it states that that would be supported, that doesn't happen. And it states lots of other things to this. I think at some point. Um. If it's logical to discuss that charter against where we were when it was written. Drafted, and the fact that it includes a large section around the community board and large section about things, and the finances of the council have changed. Radically since then. So I would ask them to read it. And then come to their own conclusions, whether it actually still fits. What it was drafted to, because I personally, as I remember the question, whether it's. Um, in what I've seen as a member over. The five years as the council's activity before today. Aggressions to what the actual turnout is, because it was meant to be. Um, parishes being able to be an active player in this.
Yeah, that's true.
Meant to be an active player at the table, and I don't think that's the case, and I don't think that is necessarily encouraged. And I think it's appropriate that, um, if people feel that. They need to look at it against what happens in. Well, I think now the Buckinghamshire Council, so in a council. Because um I think it probably needs reviewing, get to realities that we live in.
Right, thank you very much. Any else? Okay, thank you. Actually, we call answer twelve, connects A. Very, very busy as well, just as you can see. Any, any others? Right, thank you. Well, Fran?
Um, did we set up the working group soon?
No.
No.
Do we need to do that?
For summer.
Do you have to be set up, but not just chair?
Going to leave it to the summer so that the new elected members can all be invited, right? But there's no rush on that.
I obviously lay down someone.
You've leaked.
I think you would see around all, okay, right, okay.
Well, we.
I think I remember that conversation as we were going. About, it might be worth. Um. It's a bit unfair on the members to be given that to discuss the grants present, they haven't got the the policy. Um, it's been reviewed several times.
That's right.
It's wonderful.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but I mean, no, but they need to be able to read it in advance of that.
They want to.
As long as they're going to, when they're not coming to a meeting in an unfair situation. That's what I'm asking, I'm not questioning it, I'm making sure that it happens.
No, because the last energy resources meeting, that a working group, I'm sure. They will put information on the agenda, so we're sure that everybody's up to spec on. What it is and and why decisions have been made, and whether there's any that can be changed or adapted or made better. That I'm sure you're, of course, you're happy doing that, but that could have been. Um, okay. Yeah. Well. Uh, there's no response. I think they love it. Then the next meeting, November first of September, um, all members happy to move into private section.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great.
Lives up, please, for the word.